Can you hear me, Jonathan?
Daddy, you know, we're testing the Google Meet.
Test. Testing. Testing one, two. Test.
I'm here tonight for our organizational meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Escambia County School Board and pursuant to Florida Statute Section 1001.371. Our first order of business for tonight is the adoption of the agenda. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Please vote. Okay, I got the wrong script. How about if I just wing it? I'd like to open the floor for nominations of chair.
As discussed earlier in the workshops, the nomination of Mr. Harrell for chair.
Do you second? I second.
Are there any other nominations for chair? I will close the floor. I'd like to have Mr. Harrell serve as our board chair. Please vote. Mr. Adams, what say, what say you, sir?
Yes.
Passage five to zero. Now we'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Mr. Adams.
I'll second.
The other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, let's have a vote to confirm Mr. Adams is vice chair. Mr. Adams, what say ye?
Yes.
Passage five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the designation of date, time, and location of our regular monthly workshop and meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'd like, I'd like to make the motion that we continue to have the monthly meetings on the third Tuesday of the month at 5:30 p.m. in room 160 of the Hall Center.
I'll second.
And the workshop the Thursday prior to that Tuesday at 1 p.m. also in room 160. And that would include both workshops, the discussion and agenda.
That's a great motion. Anybody second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Mr. Adams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next item is the appointment of parliamentarian. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to continue with our board chair. I mean, the board attorney, Ellen Odom, is our parliamentarian.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Not please vote. Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. And election of the parliamentary procedure.
I'd like to make a motion that we use the most recent version of Robert's Rules of Order.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Please vote. Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Before we adjourn this meeting, just a point of personal privilege for the school district staff, and I am certain all the other board members, Ms. Odom, everybody else that works here in our school district. We want to take this opportunity, Dr. Williams, to tell you thank you for the job that you've done, the professionalism that you show day in and day out, specifically as our board chair. You have been remarkable, young man. We love you. We love you and we appreciate it, my friend. Come on around here, let's get a picture. Y'all come on around, let's get a picture.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome as I call to order the November 2025 meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you're joining us by live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the boys and girls in Escambia County. The mission of the Escambia County Public Schools is to provide equal access to quality public education that embraces the uniqueness and potential of each student, and we are united in this mission. At this time, I ask you silence your cell phones or electronic devices. As a reminder, there are two public forums. There will be a public forum for agenda items only, which will include consent agenda, student, and employee discipline, and that will be at the beginning. There will be a second public forum at the end of the meeting for any items pertaining to school district business or public education. Additionally, if you are speaking to any of the items for public hearing, you will be called to speak during the agenda forum section. If you wish to speak at either of the forums, you must complete a form located on the table at the rear of the room and bring it to Mrs. Harris at the front table. If you wish to speak at both forums, you must complete a form for each of the forums. All speaker forms must be submitted prior to the start of the agenda for the public forum. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal Legal Notice 11778522. It is the tradition of the Escambia County School Board that we begin each meeting with an invocation or motivational moment followed by the pledge of the flag, and it is my turn this month to lead that, but I have asked Mr. Dale Cooy, a longtime friend and colleague of mine, and if you will make your way to the lectern, then I will give a brief introduction here, although a very good one. I want to tell you a little bit about Mr. Cooy. We've been friends for over 40 years. We were principals together. He started his actual career with the school district in the maintenance department, and these are his words, not mine, as a bug man. But he spent 15 years teaching PE, physical education, and I think that was primarily at Cordoba Park, wasn't it? He spent 16 years as a principal, and he was principal at Malino, Bear No Park, Malino Park, RC Lipscomb, and NB Cook, and it's no surprise to me that all of those schools were five-star A schools under his leadership. You know, I've known him for many years. He's a man of strong faith and determination and excellent educator, and so many lives have been touched by you. So if you would stand at this time, Mr. Cooy is going to bring the invocation, and if you will remain standing after that, he will lead us in the pledge, okay?
Pigeons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cooy, for that excellent invocation. At this time, we will move for the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to the recommended agenda?
Yes, sir. Under Section 20, Consent Finance, Item C has been added. Under Section 24, Consent Finance Procurement, Item B has been deleted, and Item G has been added. Under Section 42, Consent Superintendent Other, Item A is deleted, and under Section 43, Items From The Board, Item A is deleted.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. State statute and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on finding of good cause. I find that good cause at this time. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? A motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Now we move into committee departmental reports and special recognition. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to start with PTA update?
Yes, sir. Ms. Campbell? Good to see you this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this time to update you on PTA in Escambia County. In this season of gratitude, I would like to thank each of you for supporting PTA in our county. Without you and the support of the principals, our over 130 volunteers at our 32 local units would be unable to provide the services and programs that benefit our children and families. We want to thank you. ECCPTA is proud to support the educational opportunities provided by the Escambia County Public School System. Our PTAs have been holding some wonderful events and programs throughout the month, and I hope that each of you have been able to attend some of these events. At the county level, board members have been actively engaged in supporting our local units in their PTA journey. As part of this support, ECCPTA will be hosting a Zoom presentation featuring a representative from Gulf Coast Kids House who will provide information on the services available to our children and families. ECCPTA is also planning to participate in Florida PTA's annual legislative convention from January 25th through January 27th in Tallahassee. This year, we hope we will be able to support several students and their adult to attend this event. Florida PTA's LegCon, as it's called, is a time for PTA to learn how state policies affect our classrooms and communities. Attendees will be able to meet with legislators during Hill Day, hear from lawmakers and education experts, and connect with other PTA leaders from across Florida. We invite each of you to join us during these three days of advocating for all of our children. I will be emailing information on this event to each of you. You will also receive an invitation to join us at our family engagement event scheduled on February 16th. This event will provide some fun for our students and a health and wellness fair for their adults. We are receiving overwhelming support from the community and are quickly filling up the available spaces with great health and wellness resource information. In closing, ECCPTA wishes each and every one a safe, enjoyable fall break, and try not to eat too much turkey. Thank you again for giving me the time to speak on behalf of PTA in Escambia County.
Leonard? Next opportunity tonight to recognize our November 2025 Stella Employee of the Month. Escambia County Public Schools Office Community Involvement is proud to recognize Ms. Connie Bryant as the Stella Employee for the Month of November 2025. Ms. Bryant, please come forward with your coworkers, families, and friends.
Thank you.
There are a few things written in here, Connie, that I didn't write, but it kind of gives some things away, so I don't want you to blame me when I, especially when I mention years.
Okay.
Connie Bryant is the Secretary for Workforce Education. She has been employed with the district 31 years and in her position four years. Connie consistently demonstrates an exceptional commitment to service and fosters a positive and efficient environment within her department. She is a product of the school district as a graduate of Escambia High School in 1979, and all three of her sons attended Escambia County schools. Connie's dedication to the Escambia County Public School System is evident through her extensive experience. Prior to joining workforce education, she served in multiple roles at Myrtle Grove Elementary and was the school secretary at Pine Forest High School for 14 years. These roles undoubtedly contributed to the strong organizational skills and dedications to student success that she brings to our current team. Connie's passion for service is truly remarkable. She consistently goes above and beyond to ensure that workforce education teachers and students have all the resources and support they need to achieve their goals. Her proactive approach and willingness to assist are invaluable to the department's smooth operation. All stakeholders know she is someone they can count on. Perhaps Connie's most notable quality is the positive energy she brings to our department every single day. Her upbeat attitude and willingness to help create a welcoming and productive atmosphere for everyone. She is a true team player who always works to lift up those around her. Additionally, Connie is meticulously organized and ensures that all departmental functions are conducted without incident. She effectively manages schedules and logistics, ensuring that everyone in the department is where they need to be and when they need to be there. This level of dedication to detail and efficiency is crucial and allows workforce education programs to run seamlessly. Connie Bryant is stellar because of her excellent work ethic and dedication to the staff and students throughout the Escambia County School District. She contributes to the healthy culture that supports high-performing teachers, leaders, and staff. It is for these reasons and so many others that Ms. Bryant has been selected as our Stella Employee of the Month of November 2025. Ms. Bryant will receive a plaque, a pen, and a check for $100 from Members First Credit Union. Ms. Bryant, please come greet the board.
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. I am deeply honored to accept this award on behalf of the Workforce Education Department. I would truly not be standing here today without the continuous support of my coworkers. My primary reason for joining this department was my belief in its mission to support schools by empowering teachers who in turn support students. I am grateful to say that my experience has only reaffirmed that belief. It has been an absolute pleasure to work alongside each and every member of this team. Thank you again for this incredible honor.
One other item tonight is my honor to present to you the 2425 PBIS MTSS Model School Recipients. This year, we have four schools that met the requirements to become a PBIS model school. PBIS is the application of evidence-based strategies and systems PBIS is the application of evidence-based strategies and systems to assist schools to increase academic performance, increase safety, decrease problem behavior, and establish positive school culture. This process is a team-based approach that relies on a strong collaboration between families and professionals from a variety of disciplines, regardless of the level implemented. Escambia County schools have been recipients of PBIS Model School status for 15 years. All Model Schools must demonstrate an overall effectiveness with their Tier One behavioral data and use this data to develop a plan of action that ensures equitable behavioral outcomes for all students. Ms. Stephanie Hammick, District Coach for PBIS, will announce our PBIS Model Schools for 2425 school year. Thank you, Ms. Hammick.
Thank you, Superintendent. The state has, over the years, continually increased, raised the bar, raised the standards to qualify for Model Schools, so I'm extremely proud of the schools that are here today. They have shown fidelity in implementing their plan and come together as a team, and they've worked really hard. So I would like to announce a Bronze Level Model School Award goes to Blue Angels Elementary, and we have PBIS Coach, Mr. Gary Southworth, and Principal, Ms. Jane Murphy. We have another Bronze Level Model School Award that goes to Ernest Ward Middle School, and that is with PBIS Coach, Mrs. Ashley Dunsford, and Principal, Mrs. Tyvanna Bolanger. We have a Silver Level Model School Award, and that goes to Ransom Middle School with PBIS Coach, Mrs. Sarah Alderman, and Principal, Dr. Al Marsh. And we have one Gold Level Model School Award this year, and that goes to Navy Point Elementary with the PBIS Coach, Mrs. Dawn Paulus, and Assistant Principal, Mr. Jacob Freeman.
It would help if I turned that mic on, wouldn't it? We're at the Agenda Public Forum section. All forms must be submitted at this time, so if you haven't turned your form in, you need to do so. The purpose of the Agenda Public Forum is to allow members of the public to address the school board regarding any item on tonight's agenda and includes items for public hearing. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines outlined in the policy and posted on the agenda. You are expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You are also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against board members, superintendent, staff, employees will not be tolerated. Please direct your comments to me, the chair. Personal attacks against other speakers and outbursts during a speaker's time also will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Ms. Odom will serve as our parliamentarian. Ms. Buswell will serve as our timekeeper, and the timer will start with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound, and when it does, you are to finish your remarks as soon as possible. The first speaker is Linda Fussell, and you have three minutes, and you're speaking to item 44A.
Good evening. Over 200 books will be presented tonight by the superintendent as proof that he is following the June decision made by this board to take other counties' words for it and ban those books from Escambia County schools without review. Over 90% of the books on the state removal list come from Clay County. 90% of the removals in Escambia County this month have absolutely no challenge against them. That's about 180 books with no challenge, just gone off the shelves. Do you remember the first book that you read that changed your life? I do. While my seventh and eighth grade class was reading David Copperfield, I was off on the side reading Tequila Mockingbird. This book had all the parts, characters I could directly identify with age-wise, location, the South, history, the Great Depression, social issues of racial injustice and racism, literary elements of parody satire and irony using a child's perspective. It was and remains today a classic, and I continue to read it from time to time as I have a first edition copy that belonged to my mother, another great reader. Banning books exercises control over students by alienating them from a multitude of stories, narratives, histories, and ideas that might shift, challenge, and/or disrupt oppressive beliefs and attitudes. Ban books can inform students' beliefs on how gender and sexuality work, or doesn't, whether and how white supremacy and anti-black racism impacts people's lives, identities, and material realities, or even helps students establish baseline knowledge about lives different from their own. Black, brown, and/or queer authors write themselves and others like them into existence through their books, and students not only see themselves in these books, they begin to understand and believe that another and less oppressive world is possible. The books targeted by bans often express ideas that challenge or disrupt dominant and often oppressive framings of the world. In fact, PEN America reports that 41% of the books banned target books with LGBTQ content and 22% grapple with sexual content. Book bans impact the educational system and hinder teachers' abilities to teach. Book bans create obstacles for educators and librarians who rely on a wide range of materials to support their curriculum and support students' learning. Ban books strain educational systems. These bans add to the existing strains on schools, which are already dealing with issues like funding cuts and teacher shortages. We see examples of that tonight. The legal fees for two First Amendment lawsuits continue to add up. Teachers and staff are here tonight to ask for pay increases. And I've run out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fussell. I do not have any additional speakers for the forum, so we'll move on to the adoption of minutes. The first item is item A, under three. It's October the 3rd, Special Meeting. Do I hear a motion and a second?
Let's move, October 3rd, Special Meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I don't see any, so let's vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Next, we have item B, under Adoption of Minutes. It's the October 16th Regular Workshop. Do I hear a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Next is item C, our October 21st Regular Meeting. Do I hear a motion and a second?
So moved.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Items four through seven, we do not have anything on the agenda this month, so we're down to the consent agenda. This brings us to this area of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled from that consent agenda? Curriculum, finance, human resources, operations, superintendent, any items to be pulled? Hearing none, then let's vote on the agenda item.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Thank you. There are no items from the board. We're down to 44 on our agenda. Items from the superintendent, there are two items in this area. The first item is media center material removal. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
The next item is item B, under the superintendent's agenda items. It's Advanced Placement IB and Prescriptive Curriculum with Parental Consent. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you again, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Thank you. We're down to item 45 on our agenda, which is internal auditing. The first item is item A. It's District-wide Audits. Do I hear a motion?
Let's move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the District-wide Audits? Hearing none, then please vote.
Yes.
Thank you again, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
Next, under the Internal Auditing, is Inventory Reports. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Approved five to zero.
At this time, we're down to item 46. We don't have anything from the General Counsel. Is that correct, Ms. Odom? All right, then we're at the Public Forum number 47 on the agenda. And we do have a number of speakers, but there's some information that I have to relate to you first, to keep everybody happy. The purpose of the Public Forum is to allow members of the public to address the school board on any matter regarding education and the administration of our schools in Escambia County. In this meeting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or to respond to you and typically will not engage in back-to-forth dialogue in this venue. However, the board and superintendent will take note of your contact information and respond if appropriate. As always, we invite you to contact us by phone or email for follow-up. Our meeting times and locations are posted on the Escambia School District website. Speakers must adhere to the following guidelines, Sam. You are expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You are also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks on school board members, superintendent's staff, and employees will not be tolerated. Please direct all your comments to the chair. Personal attacks against other speakers and outbursts during another speaker's time also will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned and are subject to removal if violation continues. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Ms. Odom will serve as our parliamentarian. Ms. Buswell will be our timekeeper, and your time will start with your opening remarks. When the buzzer sounds, you need to bring your remarks to a close. The first speaker that we have tonight is Carol Cleaver. And Carol, you have six minutes because you have had a donation of three minutes by Laura Wiggins. Laura, would you raise your hand, please? Okay, all right, thank you. And Carol Cleaver, if you'd come forward, please. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Leonard. My name is Carol Cleaver, and I'm a teacher at Ferry Pass Middle School. I'm here tonight with the same interest in mind that I have every time I come before the board to speak. I want what is best for my students. I know that it's important for someone like me to speak up. My students don't have cars yet, and in many cases, their parents don't either. They don't have a college degree, and I imagine many 13-year-olds might be intimidated standing in front of this board and speaking on camera. I'm educated, and I've been studying the issues that affect the funding of public schools for 24 years now. That's why I have to do it. I have the education. I've got a car to be here, and I'm certainly passionate about this subject. Our union and the bargaining team for this district are in the middle of negotiations, but both sides have acknowledged that our financial resources have been drastically reduced by the efforts of the Florida Legislature, who have drafted legislation that siphons money away from our school district and gives it to charter school companies and vouchers for private schools. There is no accountability for what happens to this money, and the students at these schools do not have to go through the same testing or meet the same standards as public school students do. In private schools, teachers are not often required to be certified even. There has been plenty of talk of uplifting the importance of parent choice, but precious little talk about being accountable for taxpayer dollars. Instead, for several years now, the Florida Legislature has passed law after law that gives special favor to private companies and schools at the expense of public school dollars. And we are expected to just sit back and take it. The last and the first, I might add, attempt at counting these students in Escambia shows that more than 300 students this year alone have taken voucher money from the state and then shown back up in Escambia County classrooms. They are now expecting to be educated for free minus the funding that was already sent. Additionally, the Schools of Hope Bill allows charter companies to take over entire sections of our school, paying no rent, utilities, or maintenance. They just get the space for free. Why are public school children of Florida expected to pick up the cost for companies that have decided to make a business out of education all of a sudden? I mentioned that I've examined issues surrounding public school funding, charters, and vouchers for 24 years now. I've been privileged to report on my research over the years in many public forums. Every year, I meet personally with our legislators and I advocate for our students. I travel to Tallahassee, and I testify during session about the effects that these laws are having on my students in my community. Why are our elected officials working so hard to make educating the kids in our community so difficult? Why are there so many obstacles put in front of us? It is something that hurts my heart for sure. As a teacher in Escambia County, I make less money than most of my counterparts across the state. Our insurance rates and housing costs are going up regardless. I'm teaching the kids. I'm doing the work of advocating for them, too. I'm using my voice, even though I'm not elected. I'm just an eighth-grade science teacher. But I know the decisions of the legislature are directly related to your ability to pay me what I am worth. I came here tonight to ask the board, what are you doing? What are your priorities? I know that Mr. Adams has lobbied year after year on our behalf, and I know that our superintendent works with other superintendents across the state, but they cannot convince the legislature, just one man alone. What will the leadership of this district do to stand up against the madness? Polk County has already had 27 requests for Schools of Hope to take over their public schools. Hillsborough has seen even more. There are 690 requests statewide. There are six hundred and ninety requests statewide right now in the state of Florida. Surely, our county will be entertaining them soon. What are we going to do about it? I'd like to propose that our union and our district work together. I've got the education and the research under my belt. To educate our community about the concerns regarding accountability, taxpayers deserve to know that their education dollars are being spent wisely and fairly. The majority of the community members I speak with have no idea that our school district is losing money by the millions every year, and that in many cases, these kids end up back in our classrooms after alternative schools fail to meet their needs. Every family deserves to make its own choices, but all children must be guaranteed a good education with certified teachers and education personnel who are valued and supported in their jobs. Public education, students, and staff are something that is worth fighting for, and I'm eagerly awaiting an answer about what our leadership will be doing to meet this challenge. Thank you for letting me speak once again before this board about my students and what I'm willing to do for them. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kim Garman, and I believe, Ms. Garman, you had, from Alicia Bauer, you had three minutes donated. Alicia, would you raise your hands, please? Okay, thank you. You have six minutes.
Superintendent Leonard and board members, I'm very nervous. I don't usually do this.
Pull your mic down just a little, so we can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Kim Garman, and I teach ESC pre-K in Escambia County and would like to talk about two of the issues in ESC pre-K and self-contained VE. I am frequently overwhelmed by both the behavioral issues and the amount of required paperwork I must complete, and other self-contained teachers I have talked to are feeling the same.
Who am I?
As I am a pre-K teacher, I will focus on what is happening in ESC pre-K as I have direct experience with this program. ESC pre-K teachers now have students with significant behavioral issues staffed into our VE classrooms with students who have autism or intellectual disabilities. They are placed in classes that contain students with more severe disabilities who are not always aware of their surroundings and do not realize they need to move out of the way of a behavioral issue, and we are not given the behavioral support we need to be able to teach our students safely. I worry about my students being safe sometimes. Typically, the teacher beside me has her room trashed at least twice a week, with cabinets turned over and their contents thrown around the room. Both the teacher and her ESP are using their bodies to block students with behavioral issues from throwing items directly at other students and are pushing and hitting them. She spends the majority of these two days addressing behavior and loses time out of the other three days as well to behavioral issues. Two of her students are extremely aggressive and hit, kick, and try to bite other students, as well as the teacher and her ESPs, on a daily basis. We do not get support, we do get support from an ESC behavior coach one or two days a week, but we do not have a behavioral tech. Thankfully, I do not have a severely aggressive student yet this year, but I had one last year. Our administration team and the PBIS coach are doing their best to respond to behaviors around campus, but it is not realistic to expect them to respond to so many children with so little support, as we have actually, we actually have five VE units at our school as well. In addition, we have an unrealistic amount of paperwork we are required to complete. I want to talk about the entry COS and staffing IEPs. ESC pre-K teachers are required to complete paperwork for students we have never even seen, based on a test we did not administer, that does not even truly match the COS or provide the information we would need to actually have valid data in these documents. Part of this paperwork is for students that will not even attend our class or school. My last staffing really showed how much of a disservice this is to the students, as well as the teachers. One of the members of the testing committee attended the staffing IEP, and it really drove home that they have so much more information about the child and can more accurately address what the child needs. Why are we completing this staffing paperwork? It would make more sense to have the people completing these assessments and that have actually seen these children to complete this entry paperwork. Why am I completing legally binding IEPs on a child I have never met, never seen, know nothing about from this one test? In addition, this staffing paperwork, it takes four to five hours to complete now. If I complete it at school, that would take all of my planning time for a week, so I'm now spending an excessive amount of my personal time doing paperwork at home. Even worse, we will be assigned staffings to complete the paperwork even though the department knows the student will not be enrolling in our class. The parent at my last staffing actually said at the meeting that she had already told the ESC pre-K department that she was pleased with his current VPK class and would not be enrolling him until kindergarten. She said that when she was apologizing to me. Why was I required to complete this paperwork? Every ESC pre-K teacher I have talked to has these same concerns. While I do not teach in the multi-grade program, I do talk to teachers who do. They have the same behavioral concerns. However, their paperwork concerns are more, how can one teacher effectively write lesson plans for three to six grade levels? And then they have to do all the grades and progress notes for that many grade levels as well. They are also overwhelmed by the behaviors and paperwork in ESC at this time. We need an ESC task force to address these issues. We need to be looking at this and seeing what we can do to improve this, because we are losing teachers and staff right and left, and it's hurting our kids. Thank you for the time. I appreciate being able to speak.
Our next speaker is Rick Barnes, and Mr. Barnes, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I just watched you guys handle line forty-four. A House of Representative member is your oversight. A House of Representative member is your accountability. And my name is Rick Barnes, and I am the candidate for the Florida House of Representative, District Two. And after I am elected, I will be your oversight. I will be your legislative jurisdiction over you, this board. So I want you to hear me clear. I'm a gay man, and I will have power to investigate this school's board's censorship. We're here tonight because this board has removed, once again, just tonight, hundreds of books, not after review, not after community input, after skimming a state list and calling it judgment. Now, I strongly warn you, you are not protecting our children, you are abandoning the responsibility that these people have put into you. So, once again, as your next legislature, I will use every tool of legislative power from investigation, audit, hearing, funding, and spending rules, and look at all four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of these people's taxpayer money to go through this. I will ensure that this board will follow Florida law and procedures that we established in Tallahassee. You will respect the Constitution and the rights of the citizens that you serve. I do strongly warn you, you may avoid committee meetings, but you will not avoid a legislator.
Our next speaker is Donald Cooper, and Mr. Cooper, you have three minutes.
Good evening, board, and Chief Leonard, Superintendent. I'm a little nervous, and normally, I'm not nervous about speaking to anybody. Anybody that knows who knows, I love to talk. But today, I'm coming to you as a twelve-year, thirteen-year vet of the military and a twelve-year teacher. I'm asking this board to empower the teachers and the ESPs. Time and time again, requirements are being added to us and power is being taken away to make decisions in our classrooms and in our schools. And it's actually affecting our job effectiveness without understanding that, without good order and discipline, learning cannot take place. Principals with high turnover rates, year after year, are retained, year after year. They are either retained at the school they're currently at, or they're being assigned to another school to repeat the same process of high turnover rates. It says in business that you could tell about an organization by the people that actually stay in that organization. And it's sad that you could see these numbers every year of principals having high turnovers, and nothing is being done about it. I'm not attacking the principals, I'm asking the board to look at the situation. Teachers deserve a higher pay, but sometimes, it's not just about pay. We have many times that someone could be, let's say, not a great fit with a principal, and that principal can then have the power to actually blackball or actually keep that person from actually getting a job, even though that principal has a high turnover. Nothing has been done on that end. I'm asking everybody to please keep in mind, I'm looking for accountability from top to bottom. Students deserve stability in a classroom. There are good teachers that's being let go, being moved, and going to other districts because of the situation. We want the good employees to stay in their job, year after year. Pay is only one side of the coin. We need to look at all sides of the coins and empower our teachers to do the job which we hired them to do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darzel Warren, and I believe you have six minutes, you have three being donated by Philip Forehand. Philip, where are you, please? Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Warren. Warren, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Darzel, I'm sorry.
I was looking for him, it's like, okay, he's at the bowling alley right now.
I do apologize.
No problem. Good afternoon to the new chair, to the board, and to Superintendent Leonard. Good evening. This week is American Education Week, a time to celebrate public education and educators who shape our future. It is also the perfect moment to reaffirm what education truly means, preparing students to think critically, embrace diversity, and engage with the world, not shielding them from it. I will stand here tonight to speak briefly about the banning of books. While some may feel that limiting access to literature is a safeguard, it is in reality a step backwards. Book bans are censorship. They silence voices and deny students the chance to learn and grow. When we remove books because they are on the state list or make some of us feel uncomfortable, we send a message that discomfort is something to avoid rather than an opportunity for growth. Take Tango and Tango Makes Three as an example. It's a true story about two male penguins at the Central Park Zoo who raised a chick together. This book has been repeatedly challenged, not because it's harmful, but because it introduces the concept of family diversity. What message do we send when we ban a book like this, that some families don't belong? Should certain stories be erased? That is not the lesson we should teach in Escambia County. Another example is the story of Ruby Bridges, which tells the courageous story of a six-year-old girl who integrated into William France Elementary School, an all-white school in New Orleans in nineteen sixty. This book has faced challenges because it addresses racism and segregation, real parts of our history. If we ban books like this, we deny students the chance to learn about resilience, justice, and the progress that shaped our nation. Students will also not be able to read the book. Small Shoes: Great Strides, How Three Brave Girls Open Doors to School Equality. This is the story of the three little girls that also integrated in New Orleans, the McDonald Nineteen, at the same time as Ruby Bridges, Gail Etienne, Leona Tate, and Tessie Prevost. American Education Week reminds us that education is about opening doors, not closing and slamming them shut. Our responsibility is to guide students, not limit their horizons. Parents and educators can and should work together to help students navigate difficult material, but banning books is not the answer. It erases stories, marginalizes voices, and undermines the democratic principle of intellectual freedom. If we truly value freedom of expression, we must defend the right to read. Instead of silencing ideas, let's teach our students how to engage with them thoughtfully. Our future depends on the informed, open-minded generation, and that starts with access to books, and I would like to say thank you to all the educators here in Escambia County for the job that they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily, and I can't make out from the writing if it's S.O. or, is that correct? S.O.? Okay, thank you. Is it S.O.W.?
Yes, Emile Sow, that's right.
Emile Sow, okay, thank you.
Good evening. Chair of the board, I'm here not as a relative of a student, but as a concerned citizen. And I'm standing with teachers and immigrant members of Escambia County Public Schools when I ask you to issue clear written guidelines to employees for interacting with Immigration and Customs Enforcement officials if and when they do enter Escambia County Public Schools. At least three counties, Orange Lee and Volusia, have done so in Florida, and I am fellow immigration rights advocates, believe that this would be a really valuable step to helping teachers navigate this moment. So, we're aware that the Code of Conduct outlines how teachers should behave with police officers, but ICE and other federal officers often constitute like a different legal category. Unlike police officers, schools are not required to let ICE officials enter or make detainments without a valid and signed judicial warrant. But you can see how employees, not knowing this distinction, might feel pressured to treat federal officers like regular police officers, even beyond the requirements of the law. And you can see how a lack of clear guidelines might make it harder for teachers to follow what is asked of them by the law and to balance that and their responsibilities to their students. So, I ask you to just clarify this ambiguity to all employees of the county. This is a really charged emotional topic, and I hope that you don't take my being here and asking you this to mean that school boards need to wade into really polarizing national politics, and I actually often believe the opposite. So, this is actually, but we have to be clear that, you know, this isn't a hypothetical situation, and that not preparing for this situation doesn't do anyone any good. This is about making sure that teachers are informed about their rights and legal obligations, about making sure that the Fourth Amendment is respected, often in the same place that it is first taught to our students. And it's about making sure that employees are in a position to protect themselves and show students that they are protected too. As educators, I'm positive that you understand that more information and clarity has never been a source of problems, and that the issue here is that there's an ambiguity right now, which if it causes issues, could cause harm down the road. Thank you.
The next speaker has three minutes, Genesee Alfonso.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Genesee Alfonso. So, I'm a substitute teacher here at Escambia County. Now, I want to just echo some of Emile's points. So, in the past, schools were actually protected. So in the past, schools were actually a protected area for ICE officers. They couldn't, ICE or CPP couldn't go in and arrest students. Now, with the changes in the, on a federal level, they can. And though Escambia County has not seen a raid by ICE, there is no guarantee that we won't see it in the future. And so, Florida counties all across Florida have come out with guidelines to put barriers and make sure that if ICE officials do come into their schools, they don't come unlawfully, which is something we've been seeing over and over again across the state. ICE coming in with invalid warrants, coming in with administrative warrants, trying to arrest, whether it be a student or whether it's at Walmart or at somebody's house, trying to arrest somebody with a warrant that is not signed by a federal judge, right? We don't want those things to happen at Escambia County schools. And I know that last time we came here, this isn't the first time that we've come here to speak on this issue, following that time, Keith Leonard had told the PNJ that we have a student Code of Conduct. But like Emile said, it tells teachers and staff how to deal with police officers, not ICE. So if a teacher is ill-informed about these issues, what is the guarantee that they just won't let ICE come in without a warrant, right? Or give them personal records of our students? That's dangerous. And I also want to mention that teachers already have enough on their plates with the lack of funding that has just been talked about from members of the teachers' union, lack of pay, right? These are all really, these are all issues that are taking up a lot of their time and that they're struggling to deal with. And now struggling to deal with what to do if ICE comes in, that's way too much on their plate. And lastly, I want to finish by saying that coming out with these guidelines would not be going above the law. It would be following the law and making sure that these teachers are well-informed and they know what the law actually is. Thank you.
The next speaker is Deshaun McKenzie, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Deshaun. I would like to speak with the many hats that I wear in this community. I am a middle school teacher, a union site leader, but also a community organizer with Defense of Gulf Coast, which is an organization that is working with our local immigrant community to help defend them against ICE and basically help them maintain a level of safety and kind of calm around the new crises that we're seeing around the country. As a teacher who spends a lot of his free time doing community organizing around issues like immigration, I'm hearing from both teachers and families the impacts of a lack of ICE guidelines given by our district. Although, which was meant, said to PNJ a few months ago when we came before around this issue, that there has not been any ICE raids at schools to this point, the increase in ICE activity around the region is having an impact on our students, whether or not we're actually seeing it at the schools immediately. The increase in ICE activity, which we're engaging in pretty often locally and we're seeing and we're highlighting and speaking to immigrant families, that increased ICE activity is creating a sense of fear for a lot of students and families that is actually causing absences or students to drop out. I've had family members say that students have dropped out to stop going to school because they feel that there is not a safety, a level of safety at the schools that they attend. And this lack of safety or lack of feeling of safety comes from there being no guidelines. Because if they ask their teachers or their administrators, what happens if ICE shows up here, and there's no answers to give, then those students feel a lack of safety and then respond in kind by not showing up to school anymore. These issues go unseen because the students are actually dropping out or disappearing behind scores of absences for fear of their school not being the safe space that they've been promised. Similarly, I also want to speak as a union representative around the issues of vouchers that Carol brought up earlier, and our pay, because those are also issues that come up frequently as a union rep. As I talk to my coworkers, people want to know why our pay is not increasing, where is all the money going? And I'm having to explain what is going on at a state level that is trickling down to y'all on a local level. Although some of these issues do go beyond us here on this body, or here us as teachers, or here as members of this community, it is important, I think, to our coworkers, to our students, to their families, that they see a school board that is proactive, not reactive, that they see people who take stands and fight for issues that affect their students, that affect their families, or that affect them as educators. So on the issue of vouchers, they want to see a school board that takes hard stances and says, hey, this is wrong, and this is actually impacting you as educators, and we value you. They want to see a school board that has, hey, we see what's going on around ICE issues, we are not taking a political stance, whether or not we agree or disagree with the federal mandates, but we are going to go ahead and acknowledge what the law is so that it's clear for you. I think the issues that I'm, the interactions I have with my coworkers, with students, with families, all stem from them seeing our leadership as a passive body that is waiting for the state to come gut their education system, or is waiting for the feds to come send ICE agents into our schools, when a lot of these issues could be resolved simply by having a more assertive, aggressive approach that actually reflects seeing our students as important and wanting to fight for them. Thank you.
Did we miss anyone? Is everyone who's filled out a form, okay? Is there any other business to come before this board at this time? Oh, sorry. Is that Jasmine? Okay. They're stuck together, Jasmine. Come on down, you have three minutes.
At the same time, I was worried. But good evening, I'm Jasmine, and I'm coming to you this evening not only as a concerned community member, but as another volunteer with Defense of Gulf Coast. I'm someone who has, who's a family member, two children in our schools, and I'm someone whose fiance is a teacher, and I'm calling on you to issue clear guidelines on ICE so our teachers can be prepared if and when ICE shows up to our campuses. I have seen Florida teachers be accused of indoctrination when they educate their students on the diversity of our world. Our teachers have been, have to run active shooter drills for the possibility of a shooter. Our public school teachers face job uncertainty or insecurity with the rampant use of vouchers for private schools and increase in charter schools. Our teachers continue to be underpaid, understaffed, underfunded, and undervalued. And now they're left with uncertainty on how to educate themselves and protect their students if and when ICE shows up on campus because schools are no longer a sensitive zone. Issuing guidelines is well within your control and would be a critical step towards protecting all of our students. Again, it would be a preventative effort. I recall this board being asked to issue guidelines on ICE before tonight, and yet the community still has yet to see action. You won't be starting from scratch, you can, and all of us can look to several other counties in Florida, as mentioned before, as an example of clear guidelines for their teachers. ICE has violated due process, they have terrorized neighborhoods and families, and have notably incorrectly detained people. Ignoring this threat to our schools does not make it go away. You have a responsibility to protect our students. It is your responsibility to listen to the very reasonable demands from those you are supposed to serve. Our teachers deserve clear guidelines, our students deserve safety and dignity, and our public schools deserve protection. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers for this evening. Is there anything else from the board or from the superintendent? Then we are adjourned.